How you doing?
I didn't. I do need one. Thank you, Kim. This screen is so clear. It's cold in here.
It is kinda chilly.
I'm glad I brought my sweater. I might get cold.
Well, I don't even have an opinion through it. No, I don't. He's doing something.
It's cool. It's cool up here. Like all, like there's air, like there's cool in the block. Yeah, it's not warm air coming out.
No, but, but I think that was...
Uh, yeah. Yeah, I need to, I, that's why I need to wear a mask to keep my nose warm.
Yeah. You can hang around for hours if you want, but I don't think you want to. No, I'll put you on the front end, so. Okay.
How's it going, Mike?
Good.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Kim.
Yeah, it's, family's all...
I did.
Have work coming in.
Yes, and I got... Thanks, Kim.
Can't be better.
Yeah, that's right.
We're a family.
Yeah, the hard part is getting the mix just right. I don't know. It's in this mail thing here for blibbertas. Did you not get one? Maybe 'cause you're, maybe you're not on their list yet.
The state for law and taxes, first of all, they've been sitting on us for three years.
Yeah.
So the federal reform plan is three years of collecting surplus.
Right.
And they give you back this little, you know, 0.1 percent, you know, back in return.
When do you, when do you wanna do yours? When do you wanna do yours?
I almost jumped on there.
The first thing I thought of is what service.
Sorry, Phil, I think it's more like this, what, what, I wanna get his... We don't like it. It's just gonna ruin the city while I see who I think.
Especially when they, the rates up.
Yeah, well, that's gonna be huge.
It's pretty sophisticated. Yeah, I know. I don't know who sits in these guys. Oh, my God.
That'd spread 'em out, make all the noise.
Yeah, for sure.
Still got a minute, don't we?
We do.
I'd just like to see the comments at the end. Because it does, it does kinda... The thing that, thing that isn't, helps wait for the people to feed, to prove some such...
Patrick, are we on?
Oh, yeah, that's not, it didn't, you know, it took me that long. But, I mean, some of them are thinking, oh, yeah. That's kinda, I mean, a lot of insults out there, but you feed through it and try and figure out what... It's sometimes, I do like to see through...
Patrick, are we on? Are we on? I like, we'd like to call our city council meeting to order. We, this is the first time that we have people online streaming. So I'm not sure if it's a YouTube channel or Facebook or YouTube. I just wanted to mention to those who are listening on YouTube that this is a feed only. There's no comments that you can feedback. So just be aware of that. If you, if you make comments, we don't have any way of addressing those, so it's just a one-way feed. We'll begin our meeting by having Councilman Miller give us an invocation and our pledge by Councilman Crandall.
Heavenly Father, grateful this evening for the opportunity that we have to come together. As members of this great community, we're thankful for the opportunity that we have to live here, for the safety and the peace, and the many blessings that we enjoy here living in Springville. We're grateful for the opportunity that we have to serve, and we're grateful for the good members of this community who take the time to come out and participate, to be involved, and who have, have concerns with their families and, and living here within the city about the prospects and the future, the things that we will be doing as we move forward together. We're grateful for this free nation in which we live, and again, for the many blessings which we enjoy and often take for granted. Will please help us tonight through, we already have a cordial discussion, and we'll be able to make progress and move forward, and be able to entertain and be thoughtful about all of our comments and decision-making, especially as we, as we interact with, with the good people of this city. Again, we're thankful for many blessings, and we pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Do y'all please stand and repeat the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve this, tonight's meeting agenda as written.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting as agenda as written.
Okay. I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Well, we'd like to welcome everyone here. We appreciate you coming, and we, we don't know if there's any particular scouts or students who are here that need to be recognized for being here for a class project or a scout troop. Anyone? Okay, sounds good. Yes?
There are some.
Oh, excellent. Let us have you stand and introduce yourself, and I won't have you come up and make a speech. I'll just have you introduce yourself. How's that? Excellent, excellent. We love that. Yes. Excellent. Well, I hope we'd have good communication and good citizenship here tonight, so thank you. Good luck in your, your quest. And, and you can stay here as long as you want, including the whole meeting if you really want to, but you don't have to. So feel free, feel free to leave if you want, want to. Okay, Shannon Iker, we have our presentation. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council. Appreciate you letting us be here and your, your continued support and participation and encouragement to do our Mayor's Youth Awards. Mayor, are you wanting to present tonight for those?
That'd be great, yep.
Okay, we'll invite you to come on down, if that's all right. And while Mayor Packard comes, we'll ask Samuel Dennison to come forward also. Thank you, Samuel. I'm gonna have Samuel stand right here with Mayor Packard. Mayor, I'm gonna hand you that, and then I'm gonna read a little bit about Samuel, if that's okay. Kinda went through the rundown, right, Samuel? So you're okay with this? So he's in 10th grade at Springville High. His parents are Patricia and Bart Dennison, and he was nominated by Winter Ogilvy, who's his math teacher at Springville High. She says this about Sam: "He is hardworking. He is always respectful and kind to those around him. He constantly strives to do his best in all that he does. He is just a sweet kid who is always polite and is always an example of how awesome teenagers can be. I am so lucky to have him in my math class. He is a student who deserves to be recognized for his dedication, his kindness, his hard work, and his overall excellence." And he's a pretty good dresser, too. I just added that in there, so that's okay. So if we could have a big round of applause for Samuel. Thank you, Samuel. If you wanna stand right over there, that would be... Oh, yep. You think after all these years we would have this down, wouldn't we? Darn it. Oh, shoot. It's okay. It keeps us on our toes. So our next Youth Mayor's Award goes to Lexi Christensen. Lexi, if you wouldn't mind coming up as well, please. So Lexi is in 12th grade at Springville High School and just as now the dresser, also Lexi, I'll let everybody know. And her parents are Holly and Mike Christensen, and she was nominated by Aubrey Thornock, who is the Hope Squad advisor and a counselor at Springville High. And this is what she says about Lexi: "Lexi is so kind to everyone she meets. She helps a lot on our Hope Squad as the president to come up with ideas of ways we can help the school as a group. She puts in extra time to help make sure good things are happening here. She is busy with other programs outside of school, but she always makes sure to dedicate her time there." And, because I know Lexi a little bit, and Lexi has served for, remind me, Lexi, three years or four years on our Springville Youth Court? Three years, and she was our judge this last Thursday, helping us with seven cases that we had. We had a really busy night, didn't we? And so we really appreciate Lexi's service at Springville High, as well as all of her dedication to the city as well. So if we could have a big round of applause for Lexi. Now, we're gonna put you two to ge, all three of you together, if that's okay. Thanks, Patrick. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, and we did, as always, told them that when this presentation is over, they are more than welcome to stay, but they're also welcome to be excused if they need to get to other activities tonight. Thank you.
Some of the best is to watch the parents during that presentation. And the smiles are, they're just ripping their face off with the smiles that they have, so congratulations to you. It's wonderful. Thank you very much for raising such wonderful people. Okay, we'll enter a section here where we have a public comment. We have three public, that would like, three people that would like to speak. If there are any others, we had kind of a mixed-up last council, and I should've explained that if you want to speak publicly, please just go see Kim, and we'll make sure that you have a chance to do that for the record, so. So first of all, we'll have Wyatt Keel from Landmark Excavation. If you wanna take, we'll just kind of allot three to four minutes, if that would be okay, and we'll turn the time over to you.
Okay. Yeah, I'm here to represent Landmark Excavating. We're doing a project called Westfield Central off of 950 West, in front of the elementary school between 900 South and 700 South. And we submitted a traffic control plan, 'cause the work that we need to do there, we need to close the road. There's, there's not another way to do it without closing the road to, tie into utilities there. It was already brought before the council and, and the elementary school of dates we can close it. And we're told that we couldn't close until schools let out for, for summer. But that puts off the project for, for so long, it would prolong it farther into the year and put paving for the end of the project really close to the deadline. And what would help a lot is if, while school's out for spring break, if we could close time to, to just the sewer and whatever else we can during spring break, and that's why I'm here, see if we can do that.
Okay, sounds good. I think Brad is going to make a presentation right after. I'll have you right after the public comments, and then we can talk through it as a council, if that would be okay? That'd be all right? Wonderful. Wyatt, thank you so much. We appreciate your comment. Thank you. Okay, I have Henry Gardner.
Thank you. I, I appreciate you letting me come. I'm actually a resident of Kaysville, but I grew up in Spanish Fork. And I've, right, this evening I'm here representing my family. We've owned a property in Hobble Creek for 60 years. It's the property that is right next to the Camp Jeremiah Johnson and the power plant. We have the property just north of it. And for years, it's, it's been an absolute place of peace, a retreat. My family used to live up there when I was a child, my parents. It was a retreat of peacefulness, and thoroughly enjoyed it. And this went on for years, and then eventually the, the scout camp came in, and that changed the total dynamics of what happened up there. And I won't elaborate on the issues that we faced with the scout camp up there, but now that the lease that you had with the, the scouts is no longer in place, I think that leaves the city of Springville with, with the property that you're probably looking to decide what to do, to do with. And I have no idea what the plans are. I really don't know. But I, I know that you have, just from what I could tell, you have five usable acres, and then the scouts have the mountainside and other property close by there. And what we, what we would request, if we could, we didn't, we didn't have a lot of say in a lot of things that happened with the scout camp and a lot of things that went on there, but a lot of them didn't fall within the guidelines that should've been by the county. And it created a lot of issues for us. I mean, we, I, I won't go into that. That, that is why I'm here tonight. What, what I'm here to do is to make a, a request of you, a favor that we're asking you as our family. There are just maybe three or four things that we'd ask of you. The, the first one is that the property lines are not, they're in question, whose property is where, and the borders and the lines. Some of the surveys show that we, we own part of the property where the parking lot is down there, and it goes over towards the bridge that, that's there, and some faces the power plant. And then some of our, one of our roads crosses over a tiny portion of the land that's shown that you are, your property. And I think before you do anything and before we can do anything as a family, we would like to ask that a survey be drawn up so that we can straighten things out. The, the problem that we're faced with, we, we are a trust. We have a trust. There are four trustees. And the four original trustees are all really quite old. My, my sister that just passed away is in her, was in her mid-eighties. I'm in, I'm 70, I'll be 74 shortly. I have a sister that's a little older than me, and another sister that's a little younger. We, we want to get all of these things lined up before the next generation has to come in and deal with it. We, there are too many problems in Hobble Creek right now. You know that. Water rights, there are just so many. We don't want our, our children and our grandchildren to have to be faced with more issues. And so there, to us, there's a certain need to expedite issues, at least determine who owns what and where the property lines are. And then we would like to work with you and try to resolve things so that it can be fairer for everyone, and it doesn't become a nightmare. The second one that we would ask is that when you do consider future plans for what you're going to do with the property, would you please consult with us and let us be a part of helping at least make decisions of the things that will impact our property and possibly the property on the other side that's a residence there? And I, I have no idea what, what their thoughts are. But we would appreciate it if you'd let us just be a part of that decision. And one, one other request is that we, we do fear making a campground there. We've had enough issues as it is, people coming in and camping there. We've had people up there with the 22 rifles shooting. We've had arrows over on our property on our, right, the areas where we had, where we, where we're at. There've been, there've been issues with people coming in late at night without, no, no restraint, no whatever. And we, we just don't think it's appropriate to have a campground right there. You only have five usable acres. Even though if you buy the scout property, you'll have the whole mountain. It'll connect to Jolly's Ranch. We, we just don't think it's appropriate to have a campground at that particular location. You already have, already exist, Springville has tremendous access to campgrounds, like most cities don't have that. I mean, you have Jolly's Ranch, you have campgrounds up the canyon, you have several of them, and you just go online, and there are all kinds of places. At Springville, and you have the lake, you have the pond, the beach. Springville is really a great place in, in terms of recreation. We, we just ask that this particular little small acreage be used, if you use it, something like a nature conservatory or a nature trail. I mean, there, there are several places that I've been that have, they just use it, you know? And they put plants, and they label what the plant is and things like that. We, we would just ask that you kind of preserve what that area was intended to be before the scouts came in. And, and that would be one of the requests that we have. And so I don't know, I don't know the process that has to take place or what we need to do, but at this point, we would, we would sincerely appreciate being included with seriously. We want to preserve it. We want to preserve the value of our property. We want to preserve the safety of it. We, we had fears before fires, people coming in that didn't belong there doing fires, that could've set the whole place on fire. We, we just want to preserve the peacefulness. We want to preserve the safety of it. And, and we look to you to help us do that, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I, I just, as a side note, would refer you to Brad Neal, who worked with Parks, and make contact with him.
Yeah, we, Brad, Brad and I have spoken in the past.
That'd be great.
I think the one, the one problem we're having, though, is, and this is not Brad's fault, it's just being able to get someone to survey the property. You know, and, and I mean, it's, it's crucial. We can't, no one can do anything until the property's surveyed.
We understand. Thank you.
I know. Thank you. No, thank you.
Just a comment on that, Mayor. The property lines around Jeremiah Johnson Camp are a mess. And we've tried to get surveyors up there, and we can't get anybody that even wants to go up there to try to do it. So we'll continue to try, but we just have a very tough time getting surveyors up there. Even when we had our own surveyor who was wonderful, he, he tried to stay away from that as well, so.
I have a property up Hobble Creek, and I know exactly what you're talking about with bad, bad surveys, so. It's, it's a mess. Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much. Evan Hicken? Is that right? Okay. All right. His comment, he wanted to address maintenance of public waterways in Springville. That was the extent of his comment, so. Okay? All right, sounds good. Okay, Mr. Stapley, do you wanna take a minute and talk a little bit about this closure on the road? Now, this presentation was gonna be done last meeting, but that went a little long, and so I appreciate Mr. Stapley for sticking around and giving this to us, so.
Oh, look, it's evened up. So we've been working with a developer on the Westfield Central development, and they've got a daunting task of putting in streets and utilities and so forth, and trying to work with them and also meet the, the needs of the school. And they came to us and asked us about road closure, and so we've been working with them. And what I wanted to propose to City Council to make sure that we're on the right page with what you're expecting is internal staff has discussed this with them. And what we're looking at is, is there needs to be utilities in 700 South put in, also 900 South, and also 950 West. And that's difficult because each of these roadways is a critical way to get either east and west or north and south. And one of the requests that came in initially was to do closure on 950 West, which does need to happen, but the timing's critical. And so what we have talked with the developer about was doing that during either when school's out, which was spoken of earlier, that makes it really late, or during spring break, which is April 4th through April 8th. And so what we've talked with them, and the decision that staff has made internally, but we wanted to run it by you to make sure that you're okay with what we've decided, and that is that during spring break, that we can have a closure through here because there won't be any school going on, and they'll be able to go in there. One, one of the critical things is this manhole. They need to run a line down to this intersection and then into the development, which allows them to do all the onsite work. But when you're laying sewer, you start at the bottom and you go up. So that's one of them. Then there's about four pressurized irrigation surfaces, services along the way that need to go also into the development. Then there's 14 water services along the frontage here. Now, one of the things that we discussed with them was, is we'll give you spring break. Of course, it needs to be noticed, but we'll, we'll be able to, to block that roadway off up here in the north and in the south. The people in this development can still exit out through here and get out. And so we'll let them block that off for that only, but there's no extensions, meaning there's, there's nothing on the books that says that they can just close the road, and then, oh, we have to stay another three days. Now, Troy was concerned about that, because he says, Brad, what gives you the authority to tell them that?
Brad, I've looked at it. I mean, all of this is within the city engineer's authority.
Right.
And there are penalties in there for violation of an excavation permit issued by the city engineer, so I...
So...
You have full authority to do all this. It's already been granted by the council.
Okay, so as long as the council's okay with what we're doing in that, and then just to, to explain a little more, on the north and south roadways, 7th South and 9th South, that neither one can be closed. They can't both be closed together, and none of the three can be closed at the same time either. And that still continues to have access moving across either east and west or north and south. And so unless there's something we're not seeing, we're gonna continue with that and go forward.
We wanna talk to public safety. I mean, we would need to maintain a secondary emergency access into that subdivision.
That's right here, and I guess we can put that in the encroachment permit that they may have to...
Yeah, they could close it, as long as an ambulance or a fire truck...
As long as there's a lane going in, right, and so we can do that. So if there's no issue, we're gonna go forward.
What about just, I mean, the two weekends that bracket that? I know that's not a preferred solution, but give them those, too. I mean, if that's, I don't know.
Well, yeah, that would be...
The weekend before and the weekend after. You mentioned the four days of actual break, but, right.
Yeah, but what we're saying is no way during when school's in session can that be closed. They can have the weekends in front and back, yeah.
I just keep remembering the previous mayor, not Mayor Chubb, but Mayor Clyde, saying to you often that...
Yes.
Everything can be constructed while it's open.
It can.
But I, I think that's very fair, what you're suggesting.
Okay, any questions for Brad? Any additional direction to give to him?
I think, I think there should be some penalties, just as an incentive to know that it has to get done.
Yeah, and eventually...
The penalties, actually, again, I was reading very quickly, that's why I went and talked to John, make sure, on that the penalty's actually a criminal penalty, so I think that's pretty significant.
Well, yeah, but at the same token, I don't think, yeah, we're gonna use good discretion.
We're not after that, but I still, it is motivating to lose $10,000 a day.
Well, the point is, again, that, I mean, the criminal violation is the only authority the council has granted to the city engineer for violation of an excavation permit. Now, there are fines associated with that, but it's, but it's, it's a criminal violation, not a civil penalty.
And I think to us, it's a public safety issue, so as far as the children go and that sort of thing.
And it's about 400 soccer mom issue, too, for me.
I'll let them call you. I'll probably get calls, too. All right, sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Stapley. Appreciate that. Okay, let's move to our consent agenda. Any questions in relationship to our consent agenda? Okay, I need a motion then for approval of a consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written. I'll say it.
Second, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, Mr. Fitzgerald, if you wanna give us a presentation... Okay, Mr. Fitzgerald, if you want to give us a presentation, and I know this is the presentation we were supposed to get in the previous meeting, so I appreciate you sticking around, so, thank you.
Mayor, we're just trying to be efficient with the time. And we used it all efficiently in the last meeting. So thank you, Mayor and City Council. We're talking today briefly about staffing changes. There's a resolution in front of the council to make some changes to both our fee schedule and to our approved positions list. I'm addressing staffing changes. If you have additional questions on the fee changes, Director Child, Stacy Child is here from Recreation to address those issues. As you know, after we approved last year's budget and up till today, the city has seen some extraordinary growth come our way. You just heard about Westfield Central and it is under construction. A picture of that construction was in your staff report. You can see the design of that here on the screen. Google Fiber contacted us well after the start of budget and plans to start construction here in the next several months within town. Lakeside Landing and other buildings are locating here in Springville. That happens to be the Peterbilt Building, which has just opened on the west side of the freeway. We have units under development, approved programming totaling, I guess we'll back up there, but programming well over 2,000 units slated to come in in the next several years to Springville City. We also have commercial building area under current development at 1.8 million square feet. And Josh mentioned today a pre-construction meeting on another 500,000. That's equivalent to 15 Smiths Marketplaces coming Springville's direction. 80 miles of Google Fiber installation and our own capital improvement projects approaching five miles of installation over the next 18 months. And so we've just seen a fast-developing city of the last few years truly explode in terms of what we're anticipating over the next couple of years. This does not include 12th West, which we have money to install, or the 16th South freeway interchange, which is likely to heavily impact Springville after the next 18-month window, but is something that Public Works and Community Development are already heavily involved in with UDOT on that freeway project. So simply put, we need reinforcements in our community development and Public Works area to be able to address these needs. It is highly unusual, in fact, unique in the last 20 years to come before the City Council mid-budget and talk about a change of this scope to our approved positions list. We are recommending that you consider adding a planner. This planner would have some current planning support for all of those projects, but also specifically would be tasked to help us with economic development and Main Street redevelopment with the Springville Rising and other projects we're seeing along Main Street. And as you know, we also have a general plan major update scheduled to begin in this budget year. So a planner would be one. Building inspector can do about 4,000 inspections per year. That's what we've been accomplishing over the past year or two. We have 17,000 forecast for the next budget year. We have two building inspectors right now, so we've been adding one. It's likely to put us fairly thinly staffed. And to be clear, we have four building inspectors within our division right now. One of them is a chief building official that does plan reviews and some inspections and code interpretation, and then a senior planner, a planner three, that mostly does plan reviews. And so we only have two inspectors that full-time are out in the field doing inspections, covering that anticipated for 17,000 inspections. A Public Works inspector be needed. Jeff supplied some robust data about what it takes to handle center lane road miles for underground and surface construction. The current forecast for the next year is 6.22 FTE for both Public Works and stormwater inspections. We currently have three, so we're asking for one more there. And again, you may say, well, wait, we might need more than that. We may. But we'd like to go through the budget process, really do an in-depth analysis of what's coming, analyze the revenues associated with it and make future recommendations for how that would play out into the next budget year. But given the difficulty there is in hiring people right now, we'd like to get started today so that we can get people on before the summer surge hits. Lastly, and the fourth of four positions, a blue-stake technician. We currently have one slightly more than 1.5, 1.62 FTE, so one full-time, one part-time person doing blue staking. Google Fiber is planning to do as much as two miles per day. And that's in addition to the other hundreds of blue staking requests we get annually. So with that, just budget impacts, payroll, hopefully none this year. We'll monitor that closely. If we're able to hire, that would be fantastic. We have some openings within both of those divisions throughout the year. In fact, I'm pleased to announce we've been able to hire and have accepted two engineers are planning to come, one in a couple of weeks, the other one in a couple of months. So we've been able to fill back up some of those vacant positions, but the openings we've had should give us enough budget capacity to deal with the Public Works side and with the retirement of our chief building official. And another opening in the building division, we should have capacity to fill those without having to change the budget for payroll. It will be an impact to next year, recall the budget meeting. And the mayor talking about a couple of million dollars that we've pre-spent in the next year's budget. Well, here's another half million being pre-spent. Hopefully, that'll be covered by development revenue and I'll cover that in a second. There may be some operations costs. We do have some fleet vehicles that potentially could be allocated to this until we budget for and buy the vehicles, but with the supply chain delay on vehicles, I think we'll probably come to you with a request to start buying some of those vehicles in hopes that we can get them in by next year. Some of our vehicles, well, some of our big vehicles are actually out 18-plus months right now. But even some of the smaller pickup trucks, we're seeing several months delay from acquiring those. On the revenue side, we will be seeing Google Fiber roadcut fee and inspection fees. Development pays for Public Works and Building Inspector. And then the planner portion is largely paid by subdivision and site plan fees. So we fully anticipate with the growth that's coming, the fees will be there to support these positions. Economic development is covered by economic development, so there's a small portion of what's being allocated to the planner, which we'll have to look to general fund revenues on. But realistically, almost the entire four positions here are 100% supported by development fees, which we believe are absolutely coming. I think that's my presentation. The resolution amends that approved positions list, which would allow HR to begin the hiring process. Do you have any questions?
When you say, when you say the things that are coming or you're reasonably sure they're coming, you're talking about stuff in the pipeline right now, not projecting forward, just, I mean, say we get a recession by a crazy chance, you know, over the next couple of years. It slows things down. I mean, you have enough demand right now that you absolutely need these positions, right?
Correct, absolutely. And that is always at the risk, particularly in development positions. As I've looked, generally speaking, some cities are in more trouble, but through the 2008 Great Recession where everything was going gangbusters in 2006 and '07, across the state, by and large, the people that lost positions at city were in the development field, building inspectors and public works inspectors. In fact, we are one layoff at Springville City and that Great Recession was a planner at that time. So yes, these positions are at risk to that. If demand goes down, we would have to look at and potentially make that difficult decision. Right now, our forecasting though does not anticipate that, even with a significant slowdown in the rest of the country, to fall below the levels we're requesting for at least four years.
Troy, I know we've seen some difficulty in hiring for positions. You mentioned that we have two engineers coming on board. That leaves two other positions. Do you feel confident in being able to find somebody to fill those?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. We opened up, for example, chief building inspector, chief building official once. We actually had a number of qualified candidates. The two top candidates that we extended offers to both priced out of our marketplace, so that's something to be aware of. The range we're posting is generating applications. The engineer positions, we were able to fill at the right level, in my opinion, based upon where our range is with the changes that were authorized by the council a few weeks ago. So I feel positive about that. On the building official side and building inspector side, believe it or not, that challenge has been worse than filling public safety positions for like three years. And so that's an unknown. I'm pretty comfortable on the other three that will get good applicants and be able to fill them, meaning the planner, the Public Works Inspector and the blue staker. Building Inspector, I'm not sure, but we'll see.
So in that case, do we farm that out? How do we deal with that?
So that's already the case right now. We had a contract existing. We have current vacancies right now, so our existing plan reviews, for example, are being handled by an outside contractor firm. We do plan through the budget process to analyze whether or not it would be cost-effective to stay with the consulting services. My first reaction on that is negative, meaning I don't think contractor will be cost-effective in this particular situation because of kind of the professional nature of it. We already have all of our overhead in place and on the contractor's side, we're going to have to pay for that overhead a second time. We won't see efficiencies in one or two positions within what we're doing. But we're going to still analyze it and see. So yes, we're using that. Yes, we keep that on staff as a, or as part of our arsenal, if you will. As a reminder, the state legislature mandated minimum, or I'd rather maximum, time that you can take before you do an initial review. And so we have to be prepared to respond to that in some fashion. And on occasion, even with additional staffing, we may have to farm some plans out to meet those state requirements.
I don't know what type of training's involved with an inspector, but is there the possibility of having like an internal training program?
Yeah.
And raising people up here and, you know, and if tied into contracts.
Yeah.
So they couldn't just jump ship after you train them, you know?
So we can't pat Jason too much on the back because he's retired, but seeing this coming, we actually did that internally with code enforcement officer, started that process. And one of our current building inspectors is, has received that training and is on staff doing only building inspection now through that program. And on the Public Works side, our newest Public Works Inspector also switched over from the Water Department, received the internal training and everything necessary to do the inspection. So absolutely, that's on our minds.
That's good.
Just one other thought. I know we've had a good success and very positive results with buying new vehicles and having a vehicle replacement program. But at a time like this, I would just say examine closer, maybe having to buy some quality used vehicles.
Yeah.
Because they're so expensive now that I can't believe that this wouldn't be a time when that might be the way to go.
It's an interesting question. We can give you some more detail on it. There was a very short window where that was the case. We actually bought a few used vehicles. But if you can believe it, the used vehicle appreciation is actually higher than new vehicle appreciation.
Cheaper to buy new.
So yes, and we did it, but now the analysis has flipped back to buying new, although you have to wait. But even waiting, we've looked, there are very few vehicles on the market. As most of you know, we had a garbage truck in an accident. It was not our fault. We ended up renting a garbage truck out of Texas, out of Texas for, I think, $35,000 a month. We asked to purchase that vehicle and were flat-out told no because they have it leased out for something like eight months in advance at $35,000 a month, a $250,000 vehicle be paid for in eight months.
When they came out the other day, I thought, we were asking, like, why wouldn't insurance cover that?
It was.
Oh, insurance will. Insurance will cover all that. Yeah, we'll have to recoup all that.
Make it sound like the city's paying the money.
No, the insurance will cover, will cover those costs and the repair costs of the vehicle, but we had to go arrange for all of that. So that's my presentation on this. I do have one other topic for a couple of minutes. We could take either later in the evening or right now or after you've made your motion, whatever.
All right, I've got one question, then we'll do a motion, then we'll let you keep talking.
Perfect.
So the, say you don't hire someone and you go out to this outside group to do it. Which is more cost-effective to have somebody on staff as opposed to having somebody hired from the private sector to replace them until, you understand what I'm asking?
I think so.
Well, for example, is it cheaper to have people on staff as opposed to just doing consulting and?
It has been cheaper to have them on staff so long as you can fully utilize their time, right? That we have enough demand for services that we're using it to equate the revenue coming in. But the hourly rate we're paying the consultant is higher than our fully burdened hourly rate with overhead for our in-house staff. So we're using the consulting side to buffer until you can justify needing an additional staff member.
Okay, thank you. Okay, other questions for Mr. Fitzgerald? Okay, I'll entertain a motion then for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2022-05, adopting and amended approved positions list and comprehensive fee schedule.
I'll second the motion.
Second motion in a second. It's a roll call vote. Councilman Sorensen?
The only question I have, does this include the recreation fees? Because we didn't hear that discussion.
It does, and you can still entertain that.
I mean, I read it and I'm okay with it, but I don't know that we really gave lit.
The answer is yes, and so let's back up and see if there are any questions in relationship to them. Good pickup.
I would let Stacy at least come and talk to it.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Stacy, if you want to hear from you, excuse me, Ms. Childs, please come up. She's my neighbor, so.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. What we're proposing here is to just add all of these fees for our city days to our fee schedule. They're not existing currently on our current fee schedule, so these would add those fees. But as we're doing that, we wanted to raise the current vendor fees that come for the Art City Days here at the city park. Our fees have not been raised for approximately 10 years, from what I understand. And so we thought this was a good time to do it in conjunction with adding it to the fee schedule. What we've done is we've just tried to look at our costs as far as overhead setup, clean up our, you know, labor costs, you know, during the, while the vendors are here, administrative overhead, that kind of thing. And also kind of come in line with the other communities that have local events and festivities and have vendors kind of come in line with what they're charging as well. So that's, that in a nutshell, just a quick, you know, a little bit of a raise to help cover those costs and to become a little bit more competitive with the other events. Any questions?
Just one question. One of the fees that you had listed, I think, was participation fees and it said actual cost. It was down towards, just curious.
Is that for the Art City Days fun run? Is that the one?
Yeah, I think so.
So that one, we kind of just wanted to put that in there because it could change from year to year based on how much the fees are for the race, so.
Don't you usually have somebody that runs it for you that you have to?
We used to. So we used to have Nestle actually run the race for us. And they came to us this last year and said that they were finished and they were turning the race over to us. And so we've taken the race on and so we're just, we're kind of getting this all together and figuring out what the cost is going to be and all of that. And that's exactly why we kind of left it open. But usually with the race, you know, you do like, it'll be, you know, kind of, it will make sure we're covering our costs. And then also, you know, performing a service and offering a service for the community and for families to participate. This year, just FYR, we're working on a color run. We think it'll fit very well with the Art City Days. And so we think it could be a lot of fun. So, you know, I'll make sure you mark that Saturday for the race. We'll make sure you get involved in that race, so. Any other questions?
Is that like the color run they have down in Salem at a certain time of year?
Yes, kind of. It'll be a little bit different. It'll be a little bit more controlled. And there'll be an opt-out. So if you're a racer that does not want to have color, we'll have a, we'll have a lane just for those racers.
Thank you.
So we'll have some options, but we think it should be a really fun kind of new event for the city.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thanks, Stacy.
Any other questions? Okay, now I'll entertain a motion for.
The motion stands.
Motion stands in seconds, so Councilman Sorensen?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
The remainder of the presentation shouldn't be very long. It was planned to be in the work session. It is a staffing issue. Just wanted to let you know what we've been working on internally because there will be an action item forthcoming for this unless the council has concerns about it. As you know, Brightview Landscaping took over some of our mowing responsibilities as a city last year. And as part of that process, Buildings and Grounds was obligated to. And as part of that process, Buildings and Grounds was obligated in, in November to turn in a report detailing not only what Brightview is doing, but our existing staffing. So for the past couple of months, we've been analyzing and looking at the Brightview contract, the things we liked about it, what we wanted to adjust, and, and how things were working there. In that process, Buildings and Grounds came to me and indicated that landscaping services are provided on a broader basis than simply mowing. And we all know that. I mean, some landscapers will, will fertilize and they'll take care of the irrigation and so forth. And based upon our current staffing, some vacancies that took place recently over the winter and the last few weeks, Buildings and Grounds came to me with a proposal to, to switch the remaining grass care services to Brightview. Or to any respondent to an RFP that could provide irrigation and other landscaping services defined by an RFP. That request for proposals is currently out. And we would reduce our park staff from a budgeted level by thirty percent and allow more contract services to take place. The remaining services under the parks personnel, you can see here, cemetery, tree program, canyon park, city park, and then a number of special projects throughout the year. So what we've been analyzing internally is having seven full-time staff and a very small number of part-time employees handle all of the programming you see here with outside contracting services effectively taking care of all landscaping services for the city. This is an interesting one, contrary to what I just said of a contract-based services for the professional services. Here, outside landscapers have been able to acquire staffing at prices that are much more competitive than our full-time staffing. With our benefits, our entry-level parks workers are seeing between a fifty and a hundred-and-twenty percent benefit, benefit. So the benefits benefit. So in other words, if we're paying somebody fifteen or sixteen or seventeen dollars an hour, they're receiving ten to fifteen additional dollars in benefits. So we're ending up paying thirty-plus dollars an hour for somebody to do basic landscaping services. And that's far higher than what our competitors are paying in the private market. So as I heard Brad tell me that kind of Brightview was an A-minus, B-plus service, there were some really great things that they did. There are some things that they continue to work on. Expanding that service made a lot of sense. Now, this is an interesting one because the mayor has authority as the budget officer to switch line items within a given division. And there's not a budget impact to this in the sense that within the dollars you've allocated as a council to parks, we can do all of this. But we don't have authority to enter the contracts. We need to come to you with a contract. So I'm here just as in the work session format to say, here's something we're considering. It's something we're working on, but we're going to show up in a couple of weeks with a request for a proposal. And if those proposals come back at an attractive price point, we can break even or save the city money, hopefully increase the services and not have to wade into that entry-level parks labor market. Thoughts, questions, concerns on that one?
That's a question on general. And you, I assume you're going to tell me that's not an issue, and I hope it is. But I know in the past, there's been with the interlocal with NIBO School District, a kind of a quid pro quo thing of mowing lawns. Does that figure into this at all?
It can. And some of the lawns that Brightview is mowing will be NIBO School District properties currently. So that's something that's, that's already there.
It's, it's within the-
Yeah, it's within the parameters of the interlocal agreement.
Disrupt the interlocal.
I mean, in some respects, you can argue we're helping NIBO by cost controlling that interchange. But fundamental fairness is what we're seeking on that interlocal agreement, and we still have that.
Yeah. And it's important people know that they do things for us that equal that. It's just better done that way.
Yep.
But that, that's good to know. It doesn't-
Yeah, it will not adversely impact that at all.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate that. Appreciate the update. Plus, we wanted you to know of the change that was potentially coming, so. Okay, Sean, it's really nice to see you in a tie. Thank you.
That's not unusual, is it?
But yeah, not always.
First off, we want to introduce Mark Lamro. He's here from the power board with us to support us. So we're trying to go by the instructions that we've been given the last couple of months and make sure we have a signed letter of recommendation on the actions we're trying to take as well as have the support of the power board. So.
Great, thank you, Mark, for being here.
So if you want to ask him any questions or, no?
Do they treat you nice on the power board?
Maybe Mark wants to ask us.
Gets a doughnut and a water, I think, is what he gives him. It's his allocation for them.
Gets to get up at some weird hour.
Oh, it's awesome early.
Mark, do you work for Bayview? Are you at a Bayview or where are you at? That's what I thought. Thank you for your service there, too. We love that place. Yes, it does.
Thank you.
He's been really good for us. All right, so you've probably read the staff report, hopefully, but we're just going to talk about natural gas a little bit. We've been seeing market prices increase quite a bit during this last, since this last summer, really. We've been using a lot of market power, meaning market spot power for the last fifteen years. But something's changed now, it seems like. So it's made us nervous. That's why we came before you with the power supply, the, the long-term power contract a few weeks ago. And we're just trying to shore up things now. This was a headline that really pointed out what was going on this summer with high gas prices. This is an interesting chart right here. Where the red is, it's, shows what Utah is as far as this November from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one, the difference in gas price and power price, and up eighty-three percent. Okay, I'm going to sidetrack just a hair here. This is our monthly bill from the CRC. And I was thinking the best way to show you how a hedge works is to use this. This is probably the simplest. Right here, we're getting a daily allocation of fifty-five decotherms a day to heat the CRC. And I don't, a lot of you were here when we made that hedge. I think it was last June. And so we did it at three dollars and fifty-five cents a decotherm. So our scheduler is putting in fifty-five decotherms a day at the three fifty-five amount. That's the actual spot price there. So you, you got the seven dollars, the six dollars, all that kind of stuff. And we're avoiding those prices by using that three fifty-five stuff. So you see at the bottom, we came out, our hedge was for about seventeen hundred MMBTUs for the month. And we burned sixteen hundred and thirty-eight. So there are sellbacks that happen and things like that. So it kind of gets complex, but that's how we, we hold our price and hold our budget. And this is interesting. So all of the yellow is since when we've done our hedge, and that's the daily prices. So they, they work down. So in June, you have your, your thirty days going down and then your thirty-one days going down in July. But we did that hedge at three fifty-five, so it was actually losing a little money during June and July. And then it started making money in August and then really started making money later. One of the issues that I have too is if you look at the bottom line there where it says three sixteen over to four ninety-four, that's averages. And averages, I don't like averages. They don't mean anything because you might use a different amount on one day, and so that average for the month doesn't mean anything.
It's not a weighted average.
Yeah, it'd have to be weighted. It'd have to be something else different. And I didn't do the math on that. That's just the average, so. The hedge I'm asking you to look at tonight, this is for NIBO. This is the prices that will be blended on that right-hand column. What will be blended to? We made such good hedges mostly last year and the year before that it's really dropped our price for the next twelve years. And you can kind of see at the bottom where it's one million sixty-seven, three hundred and eighty decotherms. That's buying the whole year's worth for that year. And at the three dollars and ninety cents. So this hedge is at three ninety and it's, and it's weighted. And that's what we pay for the, the blended amounts.
So you're filling gaps till thirty-two.
Yeah, just filling gaps. So you can see two thousand twenty-seven to two thousand thirty-one. It's very minimal. And that's mostly for, uh, uh, March, April, May, and October and November. Because it's making us really nervous and kind of left it short there on purpose, but the way the market's changed, we don't want to leave anything. And then here's the whiteheads. And we did a pretty good hedge last year at three dollars and fifteen cents, so it drove down some of these prices. And we're actually buying like eighty percent more than what we had hedged because we're burning so much gas there right now through the summers. So that's just a graph, kind of shows what the MMBTUs were for NIBO. And there's your price. You have a nice valley from two thousand twenty-three to two thousand and thirty-one with really low pricing. So you're going to be making power for a variable around twenty-eight dollars a megawatt, which is just phenomenal. And this kind of shows what's happened since July. And there's where this blended hedge will be for NIBO. And this is what it will look like going forward when you, this is, the past years, as you can see the blue line, just throwing it in there. But we believe it's going to start rising up quite a bit because of different things out there in the market. So, and then this shows how much, the red line is how much we have been burning. And then NIBO hedges are following it right under, but we're trying to get it closer. We're together, increase a little bit. And then that will be, that kind of shows what we're doing, where our market purchases will hopefully fall a little bit. So we're less dependent and NIBO production will be up a little bit. And that's the old hedge from those years. It was a little higher. We, we did a hedge in two thousand fourteen that was a majority of the gas needed, about sixty thousand MMBTU for NIBO. And it was like close to five dollars, but it seemed very reasonable when you look at the twelve years before it or thirteen years before it. But we've blended down by doing other hedges to get it to four thirty-three over the la- over the years. And now we're getting into the really gray area because I don't see it going back down to where it was in twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, where we did a lot of that. So, any questions or what do you think?
I have one question. I know some of the ones we did before, we purchased off-peak gas, didn't we? We use it?
Uh, not, not really. When we use gas, we use it for intermediate load, which is from seven in the morning till eleven at night. And then we, the whitehead we use for the summer peaking. We actually max out NIBO. We have all the way maxed out where we don't have it maxed out during the, the nine months out of the year when it's cool.
This is just a straight average. It's not taking into consideration using that gas during the off-peak hours.
Um, no, but I think that in a way it will end up using a bit in the non-peak. I think it's going to insulate us more as we, as the market changes at night. That's what we're seeing. A big increase at night. We're seeing like sixty-dollar power at night. We're used to thirties. And so I think that gas hedge is going to help with that as well.
I just, I was thinking, you know, we, in the winter, the gas costs a lot more than it does in June and July. And we're using it though for the, to, to power the air conditioning.
So we use the majority of it in the summer, but the winter ones are more expensive. And that's one of the issues with the CRC, why the, the price was higher at three fifty-five is because we double, doubled usage in the winter. So we're only using like eight hundred decotherms in the summer and about two thousand in the winter. And that was all done on guesses and stuff because the operation of it has changed a bit through, it's only been two or three years. And so you're trying to guess where it's going to go and stuff, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So Sean, this is just a crazy question, but you know like Nephi does their own gas?
Yeah. I wish we did.
That's how they do it?
I'm not sure how deep they get into it or if they have someone manage it for them. I've not talked to them.
Because Nephi is one city that does. I don't know any other cities other than Nephi that uses gas.
And I heard about a couple of others that were going to, they were going to municipal, make municipal gas, and that was, yeah, that'd be cool. I don't know. I think it's cool. I don't know.
They built a house in Nephi and I felt Dominion, and they're like, we don't do gas in Nephi.
No, Nephi does their own, but I kind of think, I'm not sure how much they hedge or if they just have a contract with Questar where they just pay X amount.
They call you, hang on.
I want to see what they got.
Another question, Jason?
Just a couple of quick comments. And Mark, I appreciate you coming because we discussed this in, in whatever it was, the board. I guess it's the board. You guys discussed it and, and there was a recommendation from the board that came to, to support this. You know, as a bank, we hedge all the time. We hedge, you know, interest rates, right? Because our profitability is very much driven by what interest rates do. And so if we hedge that, we take out the risk. That's what this is looking to do. We're looking at ultimately stabilizing prices for our customers, Springville residents, making sure that they don't have, have spikes, you know, and the cost of, you know, the power that we're trying to provide for them through the different, the different systems we have. So, I mean, that hedge you were talking about back in twenty-fourteen, that was underwater. And it wasn't really profitable for us for several years, but again, we knew we had stability, right? So I appreciate the fact that you guys are forward-thinking. As the, as the mayor said, that you guys are trying to plug holes or potential holes out into the future. And, and something else to consider is, is also, we're talking about all these new developments coming in and things. You know, Lakeside, that's already been approved. And, and this is going to require a lot more generation, either capacity within the city or we're going to have to find sources for that power to, to really power what's going to become a much bigger enterprise and city as, as Springville grows and continues to grow. So this is, this is the start of things I think that are going to come. There's going to be a lot of capital projects involved if we're really to build out and, and be able to support the city and keep those prices stable, which is what our goal is, right? I mean, I think that's, that's our goals.
Is that still the goal? That's one thing that I think we talked about with Troy, and we wanted to make sure that's still, or if we're trying to make profit. I, I think it'd be dangerous to try and make profit myself, you know? I'd be scared to, I don't know. I like-
We would never, we would never mention the word profit in the context of state discussions or anything.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I, I totally, and Jason, I think you've just capsulized it really well. But that's going to be the utility challenge right there. The people on the utility board is to, to strategically look at and say, okay, we're going to add another five thousand people or ten thousand people. What are we going to need for usage on water, sewer, as far as rates and as far as buying these contracts? And, and so this is just frankly the beginning of what you need to do and are going to be doing out in the future, so. But yeah, I, I appreciate all that you've done.
And one thing I'd like to point out is when you convert gas to electricity, I mean, if you could buy electricity at twenty-nine dollars a megawatt, you would buy everything you could almost, you know, it would be, you're going to make money in any hour. And even at four-dollar, four-fifty gas, you're generating for the high thirties, low forties, and that's still a great price. And so we do have kind of that flexibility window, but I, I think this is awesome pricing, like really good.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Sean. Other questions for him? All right, I'll entertain a motion for, now do you want to, we've talked about the NIBO. You talked about Whitehead.
Yeah, there's two staff reports.
And you've also got, excuse me, those are the two motions.
Yeah, there's the two motions and-
Okay. Sounds good. I'll open it for a motion.
I do. And, and I, luckily Troy and John looked at it, so I think it's good because we made sure we did it right.
And the way it's worded here, I think is, is perfect. We're at a price not to exceed, so you have limitations on what you can, but, but you have the freedom to go and do something.
And I'm hoping it's dropped in the last couple of weeks.
And I think this is to Jason's suggestion a month ago, three weeks ago, as far as giving you some latitude so you can go out and do what you need to do, so. Okay, anyway, I'll open it up for a motion.
Make a motion to approve purchase of up to one million, ten thousand four hundred MMBTU of natural gas for the period of time not to extend beyond twenty thirty-three. At a price not to exceed three dollars and seventy cents per MMBTU, which amount will not exceed three million, seven hundred thirty-eight thousand, four hundred eighty dollars for the Whitehead Power Plant as approved by the Power Director and Generation Superintendent.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Uh, just a question, excuse me.
Just a question. You had three ninety up there, and this says three seventy. Did you want the three seventy or the three ninety? And I thought we talked about three ninety.
Uh, this is with the Whitehead.
Okay, so something different, okay.
The NIBO one's three ninety.
Okay. I was getting ahead of myself. Yes. We spent a long time talking about that.
We like three seventy better, anyway.
So you said three seventy for the Whitehead, right?
Yes.
Okay, yep.
Okay, well, a roll call vote. Ms. Crandall?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Okay, I need a motion also on the NIBO Power Plant purchase.
I'll make a motion to approve a purchase up to two million, five hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and eighty MMBTU of natural gas for the period of time not, not to exceed beyond twenty thirty-three at a price not to exceed three dollars and ninety-five cents per MMBTU, which amount will not exceed ten million, twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars for the NIBO Power Plant as approved by the Power Director and Generation Superintendent.
Have a motion?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote. Uh, Chris?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I, I would hope that as you get ready to do the contract, that you check off with Troy or whomever and let them know what you're doing. So, I mean, it's not in the motion, but I think that'd be a standard procedure. Wouldn't that, okay, sounds good. Oh, please. You are now.
Well, you know, in my professional life, I deal with contracts all the time. I really wish, I report to a board and I wish they were as forward-thinking as this council and as these two individuals. Leon and, and Sean do a great job of trying to make sure that we have secure contracts for multiple years. And, um, they just need to be applauded for what they do. I just wanted to say that.
I'll take that as a motion, yeah. Well, and, and on a side note, we appreciate the power board and what they have done. And, uh, the intent of creating a utility board is really to elevate your authority and strategic thought in the whole utility game plan to do this sort of thing through the whole city. Not that it's not being done, but just to amplify it and to make citizens be a part of that process. So we, we feel comfortable with what's being done, but, uh, we just want them to be a part of it, so thank you. All right, sounds good. Um, whoops. I'm gonna relinquish the stand and leave, aren't I?
There's one on four there.
Oh.
The first one's the property purchase of Ten acres.
Oh, excuse me, okay, go ahead. Yep, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor and Council Members. Uh, this item comes before you. Uh, as an item that is associated with the UDOT interchange, uh, uh, process that's going on down there at, uh, four hun, or down at sixteen hundred South I-15. Uh, as part of that interchange, UDOT is in need of, of some property that's riding along the freeway. Uh, I have this map up before you just to kind of show you what's going on with respect to the city. The city right now has an ownership interest in everything that's outlined kind of in this, uh, yellowish-orange, uh, right in this area. Uh, it's roughly forty-three acres. It's, uh, property that is gonna be just fabulous property, uh, once that interchange, uh, happens. And I believe they're looking to start, when are they looking to start? They were looking to start at the end of this year. Is it still, is it still, still this summer?
It'll be mostly on the west of the freeway this summer.
Very well, very good. And then what we're looking at tonight and what is under your consideration is this ten point two-one acres, which is the property immediately adjacent to I-15. UDOT does need a, a portion of that property, probably, probably somewhere around, uh, three to five acres, uh, of that property. And we've been working together with UDOT and with the property owners to get this purchased. Uh, the city's interest is, uh, that we've already had a number of people interested in the property that the city has. And so, uh, we're trying to tie up this property to, uh, make sure that we have property for the interchange. And then also too, for the ci, city's, uh, future economic, uh, uh, interest and benefit. And so it should be, uh, just a wonderful thing, uh, for the city, uh, moving forward. Uh, one of the things just to point out, right now, uh, this, this property, the forty-three acres and the ten point two-one acres is not in Springville. We're in the process of annexing this property. Uh, what we're looking to do is to, uh, moving forward a couple of steps. Uh, if the council, uh, decides to purchase this ten point two-one acres, uh, we will then, uh, annex the property, subdivide the property to get UDOT what they need. They'll pay us money for the property they take from us. And then we'll move forward with, uh, some development on the property. Uh, in looking at the property and trying to figure out what property's worth these days, it's, it's a little bit crazy, as I think you know. Uh, in the last five to six months, we've seen appraisals all over the place. We've seen as low as, uh, four point five a foot up to, uh, in this area, uh, even just recently, uh, twelve a foot. Uh, so right now, the, the agreement before you is for the ten point two, uh, one acres. The price would be three point, uh, two million and that's at seven point one nine, uh, square feet. And again, in the last five to six months, we've seen anywhere between four point five, uh, to twelve dollars a square foot. This property is a little bit interesting. As you look at it, there is no access to the property. Uh, the only access would be through the, the property that the city, uh, currently has in its name. Uh, the other thing that's kind of interesting with this property and could be a plus or a minus, there is a lease, uh, dealing with billboards. You can see there's one, two, three, four billboards on this property. Uh, if you look at the National Inventory of Wetlands, uh, map, this property is pretty clear of wetlands. Uh, down here, there's some wetlands on the city's property and just a little bit into the point, ten point two-one acres. As part of the agreement, there would be a due diligence period of thirty, uh, plus days. The reason I say that is because there is a lease with the billboards. We, they have thirty days, uh, to match our price. Uh, they have the first right of refusal in those leases. And so, uh, if we don't hear back from them soon, uh, we have at least fourteen days after we hear back from them. So that thirty days could be extended, uh, to, uh, forty-five days. And again, one of the reasons why we're moving on this pretty fast is everything is moving fast with UDOT and also with, uh, the different, uh, economic interest that we're seeing come our way. So, so that's what's before you. The price was listed at, uh, three point seven five million. Uh, the contract before you is three point two million. And that's within the range that we're seeing. We do have the opportunity to, to do an appraisal as part of the due diligence.
I, I might mention, I spoke with UDOT today as well. Um, the, none of this is, is binding, but UDOT is aware of the transaction, uh, that's being contemplated tonight. And they obviously are going to need portions, a significant portion of that property for their project. And, uh, I've orally been told this is well within what they would expect for acquisition of that property, meaning when it comes time for them to take it, we should be getting full value reimbursement from UDOT. That's what's anticipated anyway.
Any questions for me?
Is there any merit to having UDOT go under contract to buy our ground? Or do they not even know how much they're gonna need or?
They, they roughly know. They don't exactly know. Um, they, they, they were looking, their own internal property acquisition. People are also working on this property. Um, but they anticipated it taking substantially longer and potentially delaying the input, the start of the project. So, um, again, orally, they're grateful for our participation to consider and help move this project along. But we don't have anything binding from them currently.
Is there any merit to having in the contract that we buy it pending UDOT approval or some weird thing or? I mean, I don't know, but.
Yeah, there, there's certainly a possibility, I think, with the, the interests. I mean, John, you can probably better answer it as directly talking to the seller. But, um, there's interest in the property. Um, UDOT is starting their processes. If they start their process and, um, give notice of potential condemnation, that does a whole bunch of things. There, there are a whole bunch of things that could potentially happen if we don't act quickly, I guess is.
I, I think it sends a message to our citizens that we're trying everything in our power to get this thing going. Cause that's one of the main things citizens ask. When's that coming? And I would not want to be part of it, slow it down. Anything I want to say.
Yes.
We did this for you.
And there, I mean, I think we've, uh, spoken about this. There was an MOU that the council approved, uh, several months ago, uh, with a, a pretty good developer that would bring some great, uh, sales tax to the city. So I think right now, uh, from the staff's level, we'd recommend tying the property up, purchasing the property and then move forward with, uh, UDOT. Uh, they, like as Troy has said, they're, have, uh, said they're gonna purchase a, uh, property for dollar for dollar of what we've done. And then I think we could probably make, uh, more money off the rest.
I, I have a question on the annexation. Th, this is completely within our de, declaration of what we're going, there's no, there's no.
You can never say never.
Spanish Fork's not thinking, uh, we think we'll go grab that.
No, no other city has it within their declaration of boundaries, so.
Then I would just say, let's move forward with that as fast as we possibly can.
We are.
Okay.
One of the things we need to do to finalize the annexation is to secure this property.
Okay.
Uh, the property owner currently is not sold that they wanna, to do the annexation now unless we purchase it. And so if you look at this red line, uh, it's kind of hard to see because of the yellow and the blue, but this shows our annexation declaration right there.
Okay, good.
And so with all the property in the city's name and with, uh, it being our annexation declaration, there's very little to nothing that, uh, another city could do. We've already, uh, ran, uh, this property through the county. They're good with it, uh, being annexed. We just need to finalize it and to finalize it, we need to own it.
Let's, let's do it.
Yeah.
Just applaud you for negotiating the price down a bit too. That's great.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion if there's no further questions.
I'll motion, uh, to approve Resolution twenty-two oh seven, authorizing Springville City to enter into a property purchase agreement with the Creer, Binance, Binance, excuse me, Land. Judice? Judice, there you go. Judice Land LLC and the Judices wherein the city would purchase approximately ten point two-one acres of property within parcel number two-six oh four-nine oh oh-five-one.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
Okay, you have a roll call vote. Mr. Snellson?
Yes.
Mr. Sorensen?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Ms. Crandall?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
This next item is the item I believe that the mayor was talking about. Because it may or may not involve a property that's closely related to his.
And I think the mayor is declaring a conflict by the fact he's getting up to leave. So we may need a mayor pro temp.
Yes.
Jason?
I nominated Craig Jansen.
I, I had my hand up.
You're, you're sitting the closest. He had his finger on it.
I graciously accept your nomination. It, it should have a motion.
I motion that Jason be pro temp mayor for now. I'll second.
Now you can call for a vote, mayor pro temp. It's not a roll call, just. Your vote, no?
All in favors.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now you're gonna talk to us about said.
Yes, uh, with this map that's, uh, before you, uh, council members, uh, and mayor pro temp, uh, you can see two properties that are highlighted. Uh, the properties are owned, uh, by Lucille Packard, uh, who is the mayor's wife. And so you can see, uh, the property in red is in, located in Springville. This, uh, red line that runs across roughly the middle of the screen is the boundary between Springville and Mapleton. Uh, the property to the south, uh, is in Mapleton and that's also, that property's also owned, uh, by Lucille Packard. Uh, right now, what's before you is a letter of understanding that would allow, uh, the Packers to combine their properties into one property. Uh, and I believe they'd like to do that for tax purposes. Uh, I understand that, uh, this has already been presented, uh, to Mapleton, uh, informally. Um, but, uh, if Mapleton agrees to it and the county agrees to it, it would become one property with the understanding that the taxes would come to Springville. So there's really not a downside for Springville. I just don't know if it will actually make it cross the final, uh, the finish line in the sense that you still need to get Mapleton to formally agree to it and also the county, so.
How are, how are utilities provided?
Right now, the property to the south is, uh, there, it's just a field. There are no utilities to it. So all the utilities are being, uh, provided through.
So, so we'll just extend our utilities up into that property if it comes in?
At this point, yes. But if it ever comes time to, uh, build a home on this property, they would have to subdivide the property. At that point, it would go back into Mapleton's, uh, taxation district. And so it, I've never seen this done before. Um, so it'll be interesting to see if, if there's an ability to get to the finish line on it.
I'm curious if that one that we did over the, the, uh, Hubble Creek, if they could have done that, if they could do that at this point. You know what I'm talking about, people?
Yes. Yep, that's a good point.
But theirs, could, they, they couldn't even access their property. Could they accept across the River Keys?
Yeah, they, that, that's why they requested the bridge. Yeah. There, there was a, an access that, uh, could be cut off. I don't, it, it was, I don't think, think it was an easement. It was just a trail that came from the west of that property along the creek.
This map, and maybe it's just the way that it looks, the way it's colored, but it shows a dead zone between the two, uh, properties.
There's actually a couple of different properties there. And so.
Is there a third one between them?
There's, uh, one, two, three, four properties. There's some sliver properties that are in between. And I believe they're on the Mapleton side. It was hard for me to tell which side they're on. But I believe they're on the Mapleton side and they're just in this area right here.
Is that still owned by, uh, Mrs. Packard?
Everything's owned by the Packers, yes.
So who, so what city is that in between in?
I think it's in Mapleton.
So why doesn't that just show all the way to the red? Is that just?
It's because, uh, the way I did this, and I could have done it a little bit cleaner, but I just clicked on the lot in Mapleton and it pulled up the lot in Mapleton. And then I outlined the lot.
I mean, it is possible that there's a survey break there, right?
Well, there's actually, when, if you get on the map, you can highlight it and there are lot, little tiny slivers of parcels right here. So.
Do we need to include that in the resolution?
It, it's already in the letter of understanding.
It is. Yeah, I was gonna say, without that, it wouldn't be contiguous and we wouldn't be able to do it even if we wanted to.
Yeah. So they are in, in the letter of understanding.
Okay.
The parcels are mentioned.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Penrod? Then I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
You wanna do it, Liz?
I would love to.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, um, I, a motion to approve Resolution number two-zero-two-two zero-six, authorizing Springville City to sign a letter of understanding and any other documents that would allow Lucille and Packard to combine properties that are located in both Springville and Mapleton into one lot with the property taxes coming to Springville.
Okay, we have a motion. Give me a second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. This is a roll call vote. So Ms. Crandall?
Yes.
Mr. Sorensen?